Nope, not I.
I'm not doing that.
Maybe Kelly?
Maybe Kelly.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mayor Doll and Councilor Walsh are at other committee commitments today as well as our CAO. So I will be chairing the regular council meeting for Monday, April the 13th. So welcome everyone to the council meeting. So I'd like to start out by calling the meeting to order and ask, are there any added items to today's agenda? Mr. Chant?
If I threw through the chair, if I could add a new employee that we have for our planning staff, just an introduction, whenever you like to put it on agenda.
Wonderful, how we, if we put it under the presentation and delegations portion, because I understand two of our delegations will not be here today. So adoption of the agenda as amended to indicate Mr. Chant is going to be making some recommendations. Somebody will be, that's what I will be asking for, motion to move the agenda as amended.
I move the agenda for April 13th, 2015, as amended.
Thank you very much, Councilor Durye. Moving on to, oh, all in favor, all four of us, all in favor. Thank you. Moving on to the adoption of the minutes of the previous meeting of March the 23rd. I'd look for a motion, Councilor Bennett?
I move that the minutes from March 23rd, 2015, regular council meeting be adopted.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. Motion is carried. Moving on to presentation and delegations. We'll start out, there has been an indication that the delegation from the Olds Fire Department, they are not able to appear today, but we have moved the proclamations down to new business as part of that. So we'll move on to the delegation for C, Mrs. Caswell, and the Olds Hospice. Thank you. Welcome, Mrs. Caswell.
Good afternoon and thank you. The theme for this year's National Hospice Palative Care Week is the power of 10. 10 people that will talk to 10 people, to 10 people about the importance of quality hospice palliative care. But most of us are really not that comfortable talking about end of life. And besides, usually it's for older people, not us. But the reality is that hospice palliative care is provided from infancy to adulthood. Even active adults in the prime of life die and their families need support. So in this case, age is no barrier. The other, the other thought or myth, if I need hospice palliative care, I will just go to the hospital. Besides, hospice care is expensive. The truth is hospice support can be provided in your own home, in your home, in facility, in the hospital, and now in Olds, in the two new hospice palliative care suites. As for cost, all the services of the Olds and District Hospice Society are provided free of charge, and that includes the two new suites that are fully furnished and equipped. So cost is not a factor. And a lot of hospitals, they're active treatment hospitals, and not all of them have both the time or training resources to offer quality hospice care. The other myth or, like, what is hospice care, really? It's about living well till the end of time, our time. And when our time comes, and for those that we love, I think a common hope for all of us would be to be comfortable and cared for, to know that our families are cared for, to be at peace and unafraid, to be loved, and to know that we matter, that we matter just because we are, and that we matter to the end of our life. And that's what hospice is about. And because it will affect each of us at some time in some way, we need to talk to 10 people now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Caswell. And I understand congratulations are in order to the Olds and District Hospice. They were the major award winners from the spring fling from last Friday. So I know that the donation money will be well used by your group. And I would certainly welcome a motion by one of our councilors for a proclamation. Or do you have some questions, Councilor Durye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a procedural question, and I do support the hospice palliative care organization. But I notice that we are also making, we are also being asked to make a proclamation for the Volunteer Firefighter Department Recruitment and Appreciation Week. And looking over the policy on proclamations, I found nothing that says that we can have two proclamations in the same week, because I think these cover the same week. Am I correct on that? So I'm just, I'm just confused. I support everything there. Sorry, it's just a bit of procedure I'm just not sure of.
Mr. Wagstaff?
There's nothing prohibiting council from recognizing that concurrent proclamations. What the proclamations are designed to do is to add some support for those community groups that are wanting to draw awareness to their, to their cause. So there's nothing that would indicate that council could not support more than one during the same period of time.
Councilor Durye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Then I would move that May 3rd to 9th, 2015, be declared Hospice Palliative Care Week in the town of Olds.
Okay. Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And thanks once again, Mrs. Caswell, for all the work that your organization does for the citizens of our community.
Thank you.
So moving on, we will then have Mr. Chant make some introductions.
Thank you through the chair. I'd like to introduce you to one of our newest employees, Ms. Kimberly Soutier. She's our new planner. So I'd like to welcome her up here to introduce herself to council and give a little history of what she's about. And I've already warned Doug that in her other sideline life of lifeguard and stuff is he's got to keep his hands off.
Good morning. Thank you for inviting, afternoon, sorry, for inviting me in front of council. I've been doing planning for about 12 years now. I've worked in various municipalities, sometimes directly for the municipality, sometimes on contract, much like you have contractors here. I've worked in some larger rural municipalities as well as working in some tiny, I worked for Longview, which is very small, and I've worked for the town of Cochrane, so a range there. I also, as mentioned, am a certified lifeguard and swimming instructor as well, but I've been told I'm not allowed to do that right now. But yes, I look forward very much to working with Olds, and it just started getting me into some larger stuff today, so that's kind of exciting.
Well, welcome very much. We hope you enjoy our, our community as well as working with our staff, and hopefully that the planning department will be very busy this year so that you don't have to fall back on your other duties. So thank you very much, and welcome again, on behalf of Mayor Doll and the council. Yes, Councilor Durye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am concerned, I sit as the chair of the Olds Fire Committee, and if I could direct through the chair, just a question to Mr. Chant. Because he's, he's one of the captains of the fire department, would this proclamation that we were supposed to look at, would that come up at a later date? Is that what, is that what the delay is?
Actually, Mr. Durye, because it came as a delegation first, we moved, instead of a delegation, the proclamations will be coming under the new business portion of the agenda, because there's no delegates to go with this. Okay? So they would be the first ones to be looked at as part of the new business. Okay? Hopefully that clarifies that. And I did discuss that with most, Mr. Chant as well as Ms. Escalante. Okay? So moving on to bylaws, 6A, oh, business arising, sorry. See, everybody keeps me on, any business arising from the minutes. Yes, Councilor Overwater?
Thank you, Councilor Harper. I see in there we had a verbal update for the process for the walk-in clinic. I know CAO McGinnis is not here. Do you know, Mr. Wagstaff, if we got a meeting with Dr. Turner and his wife?
I'm not aware either way.
So I guess can we get it noted that we want that brought back again so that we can address it? Thanks.
So moving right on then to item 6 on under agenda, bylaw 6A, amendment to rates, bylaw 01-06 Schedule B, water and wastewater, and it is being asked for consideration of three readings today. Councilor Durye?
Thank you, Councilor Harper, Madam Chair. I would move that first reading be given to rate bylaw amendment 2015-10.
Are there any questions from the council? Would, either, Mr. Lucas, would you like to speak to this motion in the bylaw?
Yes, I would, Madam Chair. There are two increases proposed, one of which we knew about earlier in the year. And because it's not going into effect, it's the five cent increase in the rate charged to the town by the Water Commission, and because it didn't go into effect until April 1st, we decided to defer it and deal with it at a later time. The second one is a five cent increase for wastewater and through the, through the metered consumption. And it, when we were doing our original budget last fall, we weren't 100% sure exactly what the increase would be. And so again, we left it until a later, at a later time. Now, these rates are both going into effect April 1st, and I realize today is April 13th. But we don't, we just barely got the, the March bill in the mail, and so we're not back billing anybody. The, the April rates won't be, come into effect until our, the bill that we sent out the 1st of May. And so even though it's in April for an April increase, we're still okay.
Councilor Overwater?
Thank you. What did I call you, Madam Chairman? On here, on the last paragraph of this where it states, you know, the, the number of cubic meters that are going, that are supposed to go through the line, currently we're 2,000 meters, their intention is 4,000 cubic meters by July 1st. Now then, it carries on to say that they are uncertain that the line would have the capacity for that? Is this not a new line that we're dealing with?
Through the chair, to Councilor Overwater, they're in the process of building this line currently as we speak. So their intentions was that the construction companies work all winter long and joining in the last piece between Penhold and the city of Red Deer. And they've had some challenges with contractors over the winter, and so currently, right now, they're behind schedule. They planned on having this up and operational by July 1st, with some of the recent changes in the last, even last week, is that they're behind schedule. So between delivery of items and contractor challenges that they're behind, so yeah, just pipe won't physically be there for the new system.
So my question is, do we know approximately how many cubic meters of wastewater is going into the line right now?
So currently, right now, as we speak, they're maintaining the 2,000 cubic meters. That's using an old, the old system that had a little bit of capacity into it, which is called the Waske Sew System. This new one is they have to have it to increase not only outflow but inasphales flow and everybody else's, right? So we're hoping that, you know, could be August, could be October, that they'll end up taking some more. As we get further in the year, you know, the 4,000 cubic meters is an average, is a daily average for the entire year. So that's why that number comes up. But, you know, we're fingers are hope that maybe it's an only Christmas present that it's completed.
Mr. Lucas has some comments, and then I know Councilor Overwater has some more.
With, with this rate by law, when we, when we did the initial budget, there was an uncertainty at that time. There was, there was a hope that we would be moving this to wastewater July 1st, but there was an uncertainty. With, with that paragraph is indicating that that uncertainty has now been removed, more or less. And so far as any impact on, as rates, that uncertainty has been removed. So far as the impact on budget, we're going to be bringing the budget updates to P and P meeting next week, and then back to council in two weeks. And so we'll deal with, with the impact on budget that these changes in what our expectations are at that time.
Councilor Overwater?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Harper. I guess, yeah, I, this, the statement where it says, at this time it is still uncertain, carry on there. I guess I sort of, maybe it's worded wrong as to the line capacity. I guess I was looking at that, okay, you're building a new line, but the capacity isn't there, but it's just that the new line may not be built. Okay, clarity?
So any further questions about the actual bylaw which would be to the Schedule B, which would be increasing the rates? And my question is, is there, has there been any indication from the city of Red Deer if these rates would actually be greater than what we're stating right now? And can they enforce those rate increases for this calendar year?
For this calendar, for this calendar year, it's our understanding that no. They're in negotiation with, with the city of Red Deer to see what it will be like on a go-forward basis. But for this year, all we need, all, the commission just raised the rates by the five cents.
So we do have a motion on the floor. Any further questions in reference to the motion? If not, I will ask for the vote, all in favor. Okay, the motion is carried. I would call for a motion for second reading. Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. I move that the second reading to be given to rate bylaw amendment 2015-10.
Any further questions in reference to the motion? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Now we'll move on to unanimous consent. Councilor Overwater?
Thank you. I move that unanimous consent be given to present rate bylaw amendment 20015-10 for third reading.
All in favor for unanimous consent. Motion is carried. Back to third reading, Councilor Durye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question, just, just before we get to third reading. So the increase, through the chair perhaps to Mr. Lucas if I may, the increase has already taken place, is that correct? Or will be taking place, as, as of April 1st it took place, but we haven't billed for that yet. Is that correct?
What I'm proposing is, is that the people who have used water and sewage for the last 10 days will be impacted by, by this. And so it's somewhat retroactive. They, they haven't been billed for it yet, but in some ways it is retroactive.
Would, if I may, just supplemental, what does the increase, and it's only, I noticed a five cent per cubic meter increase, how does that impact the increase of flow going from 2,000 cubic meters to 4,000 cubic meters? Is that, is that increase to help, to help the building of that pipeline because, or just, is it just a regular increase?
Perhaps, Mr., Councilor Durye, I could explain, the increase is to help cover the costs, and it's a user pay. So if you use that service, you would be paying for it. And the effect would, whether it's 2,000 cubic meters a day or not right now, would not have an effect on our budget, but would have an effect only on the users. So it's the users who are using the service would be paying the cost. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, Madam Chair. I guess I, I lean toward the question that you asked, because I guess we're wondering, once that pipeline is constructed and built, will there be a further increase? And I think that was kind of what was in the back of my mind. I just wanted to back up a little bit on that.
And just to clarify, and perhaps Mr. Chant can jump in in a minute, to clarify what we have been told today, there is no further increases that would be charged by the South Red Deer Regional Wastewater Commission for this year. However, they are in negotiations with the city of Red Deer, who will be treating the wastewater for future years. And Mr. Chant, if you'd like to elaborate some more?
I know you, through the chair, you hit that pretty close there. This five percent increase is, five cent per cubic meter increase is solely for treatment cost increase occurred to us by the city of Red Deer.
So we are on to third reading. I believe Councilor Durye is making that motion.
I would like to, Madam Chair, thank you. I move that third reading be given to rate bylaw amendment 2015-10.
All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. So as of April 1st, our rates for wastewater are going up. Moving on to proclamations, we will go back to the proclamation for the Volunteer Firefighter Recruitment and Appreciation Week, and that's item, whatever in the agenda, page 10 in your agenda. So it's unfortunate, perhaps we should let either Councilor Bennett, who's on the fire committee, or Councilor Durye, who's also on the fire committee, make this motion.
Thank you. I move that the week of May 4th, 2015, be proclaimed as Volunteer Firefighters Recruitment and Appreciation Week in the town of Olds.
Any questions in reference to this proclamation? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Motion is carried. And we'll move on to the second proclamation in reference to International Firefighters' Day. So, Councilor Durye, who is chair of the fire committee?
Thank you. And I would just like to say that the men and women who put their lives on the line on a daily basis for the safety of the community needs to have high respect in regard, and I appreciate the proclamation that has gone forth. And so I would move that on May 4th, 2015, excuse me, that May 4th, 2015, be proclaimed as International Firefighters' Day in the town of Olds, and that the fire siren sounds for 30 seconds, followed by a minute of silence at noon on Sunday, May 3rd, 2015.
You would have a question, Councilor Overwater, because it's probably the same question I'm going to ask, so you go first.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, when they talk about the ribbons that are going to be symbolic, are they going to have ribbons for people to, you know, place at their doors or, or on their vehicles like they stayed in here, or is that just something that people would do themselves?
Mr. Wagstaff?
In quick conference here, we're not aware of the details to this, but we can get back to council on, you know, on an informal basis before, before the event.
So by the way, that was a different question. Just thought I'd tell you. My question is, is we are going to, through the town website as well as Twitter and all other forms of communication, be able to inform our citizens that when the sirens sound on the Sunday for 30 seconds, it's not for an emergency and that they'll know why. Correct?
And I'll jump in here in this one, is unfortunately our fire chief couldn't be with us today as we're doing coverage for another municipality right now in their time of need. So I'm sure we'll work those details out with him and then put something on our social media to, to announce what this, what it all means.
Wonderful. So we, did we have a vote on that? Okay. Well, we will vote on that proclamation for International Firefighters' Day, a motion. I thought we had one from Mr. Durye. Okay, a vote, all in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. Proclamation, Day of Mourning in the town of Olds. Councilor Overwater?
Thank you. I'll move that April 28th, 2015, be proclaimed Day of Mourning in the town of Olds.
Is there any comments from our administrative staff in reference to this proclamation? None? Okay. Any questions? All in favor of the motion then? Motion is carried. Moving on to item HB, page 28 to 33 in our agenda, and this is in reference to proclamation for Victims Week in the town of Olds. And this came through an email, I presume, I understand. Is there any further comments from our Chinook Arch Victim Services? Were they contacted in reference to this?
They were contacted, indicating that we were doing this proclamation, and we have not received any indication that they were going to be present today.
So, wish of council, motion? Motion by Councilor Overwater?
I move that April 19th to the 25th, 2015, be declared Victims Week in the town of Olds.
All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Now we have another item on the agenda, leave of absence. The press will note that Councilor Bearshell is not present today, and we have a letter from Mr. Bearshell in reference to a request for a leave, a leave of absence from his council position for 28 days. So a motion, a question? Councilor Durye?
On behalf of me, that motion, Madam Chair. I would move that the letter dated April 2nd, 2015, from Councilor Wade Bearshell, requesting a 28-day leave of absence from the day of writ was dropped on April 7th, 2015, be approved under section 174 to A of the Municipal Government Act.
So just for clarification, the 28-day leave of absence would be from the day the writ was dropped, correct? Not from the date of the letter? Okay. Any questions in reference to Councilor Bearshell's request? No?
Yes, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So regarding the committees that Councilor Bearshell would be on, I would... I would assume that those committees are covered by his alternate? Is that what happens?
I have not had a conversation with Mayor Dahl, but I am presuming the alternates for those committees would be taking the duties over for that period of time. I do know that Counselor Walsh will be attending the Municipal Planning Commission meeting on Thursday in Mr. Bearshell's absence. Okay. So motion, all in favor of the motion? Motion is granted. Now, would a letter be going out under the mayor's signature so that there's communication to Mr. Bearshell in reference to this?
A letter in reference to it or verbal confirmation, which would be preferable to counsel?
I believe that we should do a letter so that there's hard copy evidence. Of course, verbiage is also good, but a letter should follow up.
We will prepare that for the mayor.
And hopefully, the members of the press have been made aware that Counselor Bearshell has asked for a leave of absence. Thank you. So, item AD on the agenda, Financial Impacts, Province of Alberta. And I'm so glad that Mr. Lucas is here as well, because I have a few questions. But I'm sure that there's some more comments. Mr. Lucas, did you want to start out with this?
The, so far, as far as we know, unless there's anything that will become to light later on, the impact of the provincial budget is not really terribly great. We lose, we actually gained a little tiny bit in our municipal sustainability initiative capital grant. The operating grant is kept the same. The police grants that we get are kept the same. The biggest impact for us is on Ms. Godfrey's report on the third paragraph, that where the province is no longer going to be paying the grant in lieu in place of taxes for the senior citizens lodges. And although the recommendation is that this be received for information, I would really like counsel to write a letter to, well, at the moment, with the writ dropped, we don't have an MLA or a minister, so I'm not sure. But, you know, I would, because the problem is, under the Municipal Government Act, the province doesn't have to pay taxes, but they voluntarily give us grants in lieu of taxes, based on the assessment. And my fear is if they take the grant in lieu away from one portion, what's to stop them from taking the grant in lieu away from the other provincially owned property within the town? And so it's just this, the first step, and I would like at some point for counsel to register a protest to that.
I also had those same concerns in reference to the grants that are, the grant in lieu of property tax in reference to senior housing. Do we actually know the dollars that would be involved in that? A guesstimation of the dollars right now? Because, yeah, I believe that Mr. Lucas is right. This could be just the start, where they're saying, here's our start, and then we'll apply it to other provincially owned buildings in municipalities.
Just bear with me for just a second.
Counselor Overwater says in one part of our agendas, indicates $41,000 in 2014. So the 2015 property tax would probably be greater than 2014, with increases of assessment.
The total grant in lieu tax revenue from 2014 was $47,000, so.
$47,000?
Yes. Now, in this report from the province, they're saying that the total is $41,000, and they list four properties. Now, in our assessment report that we get from the assessor, he only lists three properties as being senior citizens housing. And so I'm not sure, you know, so there's a bit of a discrepancy, which I haven't been able to settle in my own mind yet. So I'm not sure what the fourth property is. I mean, they listed here, but I'm not sure which three are assessed as senior citizens lodges.
Before we move on to a letter that we would ask the mayor to write to Municipal Affairs, they still exist today. Library Services Grant, I see that as part of the budget for 2015, 2016. They did increase the budget from 26 to 29.5, and it's based upon per capita. So it's a 10 cent increase in the per capita rate, but it would only mean about $8,000 to the Town of Olds. Any other questions from council? Yes, Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 41, where it talks about the capital plan, will we benefit from any of that $2.3 billion for other capital projects, including housing, water, wastewater management, and community facilities? Do we benefit from that?
Through Chairman or Deputy Mayor. What we get now is we get money from the province through the municipal sustainability initiative.
Right, that's part of it.
And this would be part, you know, the MSI grants are part of that. And they have told us that they are not, even with the change in financial outlook for the budget year 2015, 16, that they are not changing the total amount of what the projected MSI grant is out to 2024, I believe it is. But they are reserving their position, stating their position, until they sort of see what the cash flow is like over the next, between now and 2024. We will get it all in total. We're just not sure the timing.
I would certainly entertain a motion from council directing the mayor through conversations with our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Lucas, to write a letter to Municipal Affairs indicating our concerns in reference to a number of items, specifically seniors housing, loss of those grants, to the provincial government in reference to the budget. So are, would you be in favor of that, of somebody making a motion? Counselor Durie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So moved.
Everybody understands that we'll be sending a letter, or Mayor Dahl will be sending a letter on behalf of council? We'll tell her later. Oh, yeah, you do have a question? Good.
On page 45, where it talks about the education property tax, can you go to that? At the very bottom, it states that this scenario leaves municipalities with four unpalatable options: raise taxes, continue to rely on government transfers, take on debt, or defer municipal infrastructure or services. How greatly will that affect our increase in taxes? Will it?
This is not a simple question. The simple answer to a not simple question is that so far as our infrastructure is concerned, the second two options, continue to rely on government transfers, well, actually, the three options, take on debt, or, well, actually, all four. I mean, we could raise taxes too, although there's no appetite for that. But in order for us to continue to try to maintain the current infrastructure services that are provided, we are left, you know, we're the same as any other municipality. We're left with those options. Now, the direct impact of the education property tax requisition for the Town of Olds for the 2014 fiscal year will not have a huge impact. In fact, if anything, yeah, we'll just leave it at that. It will not have a huge impact.
Supplemental. So should this be included in the letter? Are concerned with that part of this, part of the proposed provincial payouts?
For me, it's a separate, a separate item, and I would prefer not to muddy the water. I'd like to leave just addressed as grants in lieu as a single item. And the education tax is a separate item.
Okay. So we do have a motion to directing the mayor to send a letter to Municipal Affairs in reference to the provincial budget, in reference to the loss of grants, in reference to senior housing and property tax. So I would ask for a vote on the question. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Lucas, for bringing that to our attention. So moving on, we do have the CAO report to counsel on the Olds Institute. And that's in your agenda. Instead of doing that, we're sending a letter. So we can do both. If you'd like to make a motion to receive free information, that's okay. To receive free information, the impacts of the provincial budget. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. So we're moving on to the Olds Institute report from our CAO, Mr. McKinnis. Any questions? It's not. Who's over there? Who can respond to the questions? Any questions?
If there are any questions, we'll divvy it up between the three of us here.
Okay. Yes. Make note of the April annual meeting of the Olds Institute for April 30th at the Olds Golf Course. Also, there was an indication from CAO of the Olds Institute, Mr. Thompson, that they have been informed that the budget, provincial budget, has impacted Olds Institute and the Town of Olds Alberta Main Street program. And I understand, perhaps, Mr. Wegstaff, could you elaborate a little bit further? I don't have that. Ma'am, we'll get to that.
I may. First of all, there is going to be an impact that the Olds Institute Board will be addressing about $40,000 in grant impact with regards to the budget that came down. So they are going to be meeting as a board to address that. As far as the Alberta Main Street program is considered, as well as the Heritage Preservation Partnership Program, those two programs were eliminated quietly in the budget. So they do have impacts. So it is less of an impact for us in one manner. The Alberta Main Street program, we were on the end of a three-year granting process that helped initiate, so we made a lot of headway in the last seven years. It's an unfortunate piece as far as those smaller communities that are using their heritage resources as a cornerstone for developing their economic development and moving forward as we are. We're in a fortunate position that we have a vibrant committee in the Olds Institute to be able to carry forward some of that work. It does make it a little bit more challenging. One of the good news pieces that we did discover on Friday, and it took a lot of, because the staff were cut the very next morning, they were reassigned duties in the government. So it did take us a little bit to figure this out. But one of the good news pieces was that the Historical Resources Foundation is maintained. So though the Heritage Preservation Partnership Program was cut, the Historical Resources Foundation is maintained. That means that the granting that that foundation was doing with regards to the physical upkeep to historical resources that have been, or sorry, heritage resources that have been dedicated is still in place so that there is 50/50 granting for owners of those properties. That was critical. We were concerned that if that had been lost, that we were going to have to look at different strategies to ensure that the private ownership, which are municipal resources, municipal historic resources, that we, sorry, heritage, different than historical, that we were going to have to strategize on ways to maintain that. But so that was some very good news for us on Friday. We are still working with the Uptown Committee of the Olds Institute to move forward with preserving and celebrating the physical heritage of our communities, and that's going to maintain moving forward. But certainly, for those communities who were in the infancy or are beginning to take interest in the Alberta Main Street program, it's a major setback for them. It is still a significant setback for Alberta Main Street overall. For us, though, I think we, once we get through and we don't panic over the fact that that program has been cut, we're going to commit to those principles. It is something in our uptown area redevelopment plan. That was core. The principles that are in the Alberta Main Street program came out in that, in our plan, very strongly. So we're going to continue to commit to those principles and work with both the community and as well as the private property owners of those properties to ensure that that maintains part of the character moving forward that we develop.
I'm presuming that the Uptown Committee has been informed of all of the changes?
They have, and tomorrow morning, we are meeting again with them. So the Uptown, one of the pieces is the Four Points Committee, obviously, is going to be disbanded. It was, sole purpose was to ensure the implementation of the Alberta Main Street program. So with that program no longer in place, there's no longer a need for that particular committee. However, Uptown, it worked very closely with Uptown and almost reflected the outcomes that Uptown was trying to achieve. So it certainly will mean that the Uptown Committee itself will assume a lot of that role in principle.
So could I receive a motion to accept the CAO report on the Olds Institute, Community and Regional Development? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. I move that the Town of Olds 2014 audited financial statements and the 2014 Province of Alberta financial information return. Am I in the wrong one? Yes, I am, sorry. I'm ahead of myself. That, I'm sorry. I withdraw that, and I will move that the Olds Institute for Community and Regional Development And I will move that the Olds Institute for Community and Regional Development Board report for February, March 2015 be received for information. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried.
So we will be having a presentation, but the presentation from the auditors will be as an in-camera presentation first. So, Councilor Overwater.
Yes, I'll move to go in-camera for our auditor's report, I guess, so.
Mr. Wegsev.
Again, I guess it's not your worship, but Deputy Mayor, would you entertain a recess in the meantime? So if there are media questions that they could address?
For sure.
Counsel.
Yes, we will be coming back. So we will do a recess and then moving to go in-camera, okay?
Oh, can we do that now, okay? Okay, I'll move to go into recess for ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
We made a motion to... Councilor Overwater, thank you. Okay, Darren, you can stay there, as a matter of fact. And there's mics in front of you.
Okay, thank you. So we've just had a good chance to go through all the financial statements. The main page, or I guess that you hire us to do, is the auditor's report. And auditor's report does point out that it is management's responsibility for the financial statements. It's our responsibility to do our audit and to provide our audit opinion. And our opinion is that these financial statements are fairly presented. So they do fairly represent the results of operations of the town for the year ended December thirty-first. And I did want to, I did mention it in camera, but I want to mention it again, that we received excellent cooperation from town's employees. So Garth gave us great cooperation and his team, and especially Sheena Lindeman gave us, she was very awesome when we were working, I was talking with my staff, and they mentioned to me how awesome it was to work on this audit. And that's not always the case. We've got a couple other municipalities that are sort of on the other end of the spectrum. So just want to point that out, that we did receive excellent cooperation, so.
Thank you very much. So I believe that there was just, any other questions that you had other than the question in reference to the reporting of Note Two? And this is a discussion that we wanted to have with Mr. Lucas. And that would be in reference to the loans to Olds Institute, and that's Note Page Ten. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lucas. If something were to happen to the Olds Institute, would the Town of Olds then become the owner of the infrastructure of the Olds Fiber?
There are agreements in place where the loan, all the money that has been spent on capital is fully secured by those capital assets. And so we would be able to take steps to redeem those capital assets in order to cover the loan.
So my question, and I do apologize, it was in your absence. My question to our accounting firm was whether that, the note should reflect that in reference to the loan receivable? Does that reflect that within that, so we can explain it to our citizens?
Now, you said Note Two.
I'm sorry, it's Note Five.
Note Five, okay.
On Page Ten. Loan receivable.
This is similar to the note that we had last year. I can't imagine that the wording would have changed much from year to year. If council would like, I don't think it would be too terribly onerous to add a sentence saying that this loan is fully guaranteed, just, you know, by the assets.
I believe the council would like to have that one line added to that note.
Yeah, we can do that, no problem. So if you're assuming you're going to approve them today, just approve them with that one amendment, and then we can make that change happen.
Yes. So the one would change Note Five to indicate that it's fully secured. Okay, okay. And the other one would be to approve the financial statements. And the financial information return. Okay, good enough. So I would accept some motions then. Motion by Councilor Overwater.
Thank you. I'll move what she said. You got it down? Kelly?
To amend Note Five in the financial statements, in Town of Olds financial statements, to indicate that the loan to the Olds Institute for OICRD is fully secured. Does that cover it? Okay.
All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. And then I would accept another motion from Councilor Durye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move that the Town of Olds 2014 audited financial statements and the 2014 Province of Alberta financial information return as amended. I think I'm going to change that. Okay, strike that, hang on. I would move that the Town of Olds 2014 audited financial statements as amended and the 2014 Province of Alberta financial information return be approved as presented.
Any further questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for waiting and for answering all of our questions and being very tolerant of us. Thank you. Reports from council? Page one thirty-one? Are there any reports from council? Thank you very much.
I just wanted to present a notice of motion. So am I to read them out? I can't remember.
Yeah? Read them, okay. And then we can have them to Ms. Eskeland.
Okay. So I delivered it on April thirteenth meeting. The substantive portion of the motion will be to continue shrub beds along Highway twenty-seven, Forty-Sixth Street, between Sixty-Five Avenue and Seventy Avenue. Do you want me to read them all concurrently? I have three.
You have three notices of motion?
Yes.
Yeah, each one should be separate.
Okay, they are.
Yeah, okay.
So continue.
Yep.
Okay. The substantive portion of Number Two is to place raised shrub beds along south side of Highway twenty-seven, Forty-Sixth Street, between Fifty-seventh Avenue and Sixty-first Avenue. And the third one, the substantive portion, is to place planters on the median of Highway twenty-seven and Forty-Sixth Street. Those are the three.
Okay, so what I would suggest is that notice of motion, we will provide those to Ms. Eskeland. And do you have any budget information in reference to that?
No.
Okay, good enough. Just, Councilor Overwater.
Yes. I believe we, I think Mr. Chant was looking into Department of Transportation, were you not, Mr. Chant, regarding the flower beds on the median? Because we discussed that at our last...
But we've got a notice of motion now, so we shouldn't be, it should be discussed when the motions come up. Councilor Overwater, okay? So it's now giving our administration time to do their homework for those notices of motion, as well as perhaps some budget dollars reflected in that. Okay? So we will move on. Any further reports? No? No? I don't either. Anybody want to report on the Spring Fling? Yes. Councilor Overwater.
Sure. Thank you. Yes, I attended the Spring Fling. I don't think people were sure how well it would have, we would have had responded to it with the cost of the tickets getting in there. However, I think everybody was quite surprised at the number of people that were there. I heard there was somewhere around five-hundred-and-sixty. And it was a learning curve for the organizers as they stated. However, it went very well. The dance was very good. And I'm trying not to say that. It was a wonderful experience, and I can't wait to do it again next year. And they will be doing it again next year. They said this was their first annual, so next year will be their second. And we were very happy that hospice received the highest votes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move that the reports from elected officials for the period ending April thirteenth, 2015, be received for information.
Okay, all in favor? Motion is carried. Correspondence and information. So we have a number of items for information. One is the request to provide submissions for the Fourteenth Annual Ministers' Awards for Municipal Excellence. Anybody want to refer that further? To see if we should be applying for some, or making submissions for awards?
Were you looking for your counselors to direct administration to do so?
Yes, I think so.
When I looked at you, I was looking for the same.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would move that we direct council to look for opportunities to, in the various categories, to apply, to provide, excuse me, submissions for the Fourteenth Annual Ministers' Awards for Municipal Excellence. Or Municipal Excellence. Did you get that, Ms. Eskeland, did I?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Administration. Administration. And it is my understanding that Mayor Doll will be attending a special seniors' retreat or symposium in Edmonton. She will be getting more information about seniors' and seniors' housing at this Edmonton symposium. There is a fundraising golf tournament for the Mountain View Foundation September seventeenth at the Olds Golf Course this year. That's great.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Was that a motion that I made? If it was, and do we not need to vote on that?
We won't be.
Okay.
I just wanted to follow up. So a motion to approve the, a vote on the motion, sorry. All in favor? Now, another motion that council received the correspondence and information report. Councilor Bennett.
Thank you. I move that the correspondence and information report in the April thirteenth, 2015, be received for information.
All in favor? Motion is carried. And a motion to adjourn. Councilor Overwater, we made it.
Old Community TV, your go-to channel for news and information in Olds, Alberta.